When we go back into work session now, we'll turn it over to Mr. Ford.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Malone, appreciate that. And I want to thank again, as you know, our staff in finance, Mr. Reed and Ms. Russatano. And I know Ms. Russatano is on her way. She said she lost track of time, so, but she will be here hopefully in a few seconds. She's working, that's right. We tend to be movers and shakers over in finance, so she's doing a great job for us. So, anyway, the compilation of this particular, what I call first board budget work session, will cover the items noted on the agenda. That is part of the handout and the advanced posting to the website, our board docs, excuse me. And this presentation after today's meeting will be posted on our budget webpage for public consumption as well. So I wanted the board to be aware of that. Okay, without further ado, we're going to go ahead and get into the first item on the agenda, which is what we refer to as our budget reconciliation page. This will become a page that the board will become familiar with because over the next several weeks as we meet with the board, the goal will be to ensure that number that you see right there that I'm circling with the mouse is zero. Because at this point, at this point, our structural budget overage or deficit, in this case, we have a structural budget deficit of 6.9 million because at this moment in time, our available revenue, new revenue in 19, exceeds what the current requests that the board and the superintendent, at this point, the superintendent and staff have brought forward to the board to the tune of 9.2 million. So the difference between the projected revenue and the projected expenditures of 9.2 million is this current structural budget deficit of 6.9 million. So over the next couple work sessions and as the board has an opportunity for input with the superintendent and staff, the goal obviously will be to get that to zero. Any questions on the reconciliation page? Okay. Notice that you have presented before you, at the bottom of this page, a couple things. First are the summary of the expenditures in the strategic priorities that the superintendent have outlined, not only at the state of the schools event, but also at various other times that she's had an opportunity to speak, last being at the Greater Salisbury Committee yesterday, where she did a great job, once again, outlining what her vision for the future in Wycoman County, which she has dubbed Imagine 2022 in Wycoman County Public Schools. And the framework around which that Imagine 2022 is built are the, what we refer to as the three strategic priorities of a pre-K initiative Phase 1, an alternative pathways, graduation rate increase, signature programs and ESOL Phase 1, and a recruit and retain of a highly qualified workforce Phase 1. The sum of those three initiatives for FY19, as has been, as is being presented to the board, total of 5.8 million. And then the balance of the budget requests that are being submitted to the board today, for consideration at least, in this early part of the process, are three, almost 3.4 million. And we're going to be going over all of these requests in detail now in this air first and then continuing over the next couple of weeks. The total in this summary presentation here is the 9.2 million. Also, for the first time, the board is seeing what we are referring to as proposed one-time request to be submitted to the county executive outside of the operating requests that the board will, in working with the superintendent, decide how much to ask for from the county, either MOE or some amount over maintenance of effort. These requests are what we refer to as one-time non-recurring requests that are outside of that MOE request and do not impact maintenance of effort in the future year. And we will discuss those as we get to them later on in the presentation. Okay, let's start off with revenue. This is an updated revenue sheet, and I'll explain to you what the update is. At this point, the revenue is still based upon an MOE request. MOE for next year is an additional $646,811. We reviewed that MOE calculation with the board last week, and that is part of the presentation that is posted on our budget webpage. Also notice that we are not anticipating the disparity grant at this moment in time. Hopefully that may change as well. But at this moment, that was, to our knowledge, a one-time disparity grant from the county by the state. Also-
Did anything change so why we wouldn't get that? Or it's just it was a one-time thing, period?
It was a one, it was a one-time. First time we'd ever received it. And we have no reason to believe that we're going to get it, but we could always hope that we're going to get it.
Hope springs eternal.
Yes, it does, yes, it does. But, but we would be remiss if we were to assume, yes.
So that was just a pass-through item from the state to the county, and they passed it on to us?
That's correct. They, they, the disparity grant is a grant that is typically for the counties to be used as they see fit. This particular grant was for the counties, there were four counties. They had to, by legislation, give it to the school systems. Okay.
Mr. Ford, I got an email this morning. I got an email this morning, it's from someone who goes over budgets, and it showed that the budgets for the state and on Wycomico County, the majority of the indicators were not going up as I was kind of led to believe by, by hearing other meetings, oh, everything's fine and all. But they were in fact going down. And that gives me cause for concern.
You're referring to overall the state budget?
It goes by state, and then it has a breakdown for each individual county. And our indicators were not that high, so I don't know.
Right. Well, all I can tell you is, the information that we have here was submitted to us by MSD based upon the governor's budget. So if you have information that I don't have, I'd appreciate you sharing it with me so we can review it. Thank you. So anyway, the, the information for state aid is what has been released by MSD based upon the release of the governor's budget. Again, that number did not change from last week, 2.5 million. And the other revenue, the inter-fund transfers and transfers from other liahs, those numbers have not changed since last week. The only number that has changed from our presentation last week is we have added a half a million dollars based upon what we are estimating for FY18, year-end funding. At this point, we are, based upon a review with Mr. Reed, our comptroller, we are projecting a half a million dollar potential amount available out of the 18, the year we're currently in, to be available for the 19 budget. So the only change from last week is this additional half a million coming out of 18 based upon estimates that he's received based upon projections, predominantly out of utilities, I believe. Is that correct, Mr. Reed? And salaries? Thank you. So overall, you can see at this point, we're at 2,279,000 additional new revenue, or a 1.19% increase. The revenue from all other local sources did not change from previous week. Is still anticipating an increase of 63.3, that's the same as it was last week. Again, each week, you will be seeing these two pages as we get closer, not only closer to the fiscal year-end, but as we're able to better fine-tune our estimates on things like earnings on investments. We analyze that information on a daily basis. So we'll be able to, as, and I think you're hearing it, and I bet you Mr. Malone's hearing it. Interest rates are beginning, yep, they're beginning to tweak up. And so we're, we analyze this every day. So I would not be surprised next week for Mr. Reed to come in to me and say, "I think we need to update, or uptick our projections for earnings on investments." But that, that's the kind of thing why you're going to see this every, every week. Okay. All right. Let's see if I can't make this a tad bigger. Okay. You have in front of you now, the Priority 1 detail, which represents the pre-K initiative Phase 1 budget request. And I'm going to turn it over to my colleague here to talk about the 11 in the 11.
We started a pre-K expansion task force earlier in the year to look at how we could expand our offerings throughout our entire system with the goal of ultimately getting to universal. And it was the recommendation of this group to, or that group to utilize all available space currently accessible in our elementary primary classroom, or schools. Principals want pre-K, they want to offer it as much as possible. And some of them kind of have gotten creative in regards to opening up some space, in regards to some of the ways of like art on a cart, which you might have heard before, or doing away with some computer labs because of the use of laptops and so forth. So they've created the space for 11 new classrooms without any new brick and mortar, without any portables or anything like that. So just utilizing existing space, we can expand our pre-K offerings by adding 11 new classrooms next year. So we have the space, we would just need to fill it. So that's where those 11 come from. It would be a teacher and an assistant for each classroom. Also, the materials of instruction, the furniture, and the technology needed to run a pre-K classroom is all a part of that dollar figure that you see there.
Go ahead.
These 11 classrooms we have for a number, for a number of kids that we don't know how many it's going to be, but we have space for 11.
He pushed his mic away because he didn't think he needed it.
What do we need as a minimum to say we have, we are offering universal pre-K? And I know you can't go into a new program and have it 100% up and running, but what is the minimum that we need to say we offer pre-K, universal pre-K? But we might have a little bit of a waiting list.
So you can get the-
If you have a waiting list, you don't have universal. That's to-
It's your thought so that we get the state money, right?
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Definition, universal means that every child has access.
Has the ability.
And if you don't know that number that's coming, I mean, how do these four counties that offered universal pre-K and who are getting funding from the state, suppose their capacity goes over? You know, the requirement for kids, I mean, they get more kids than what they thought they were going to get.
I can speak to several of the counties. Somerset, but more specifically, I'm familiar with Kent County and the Garrett County, that they have space available because they had to-
Close. Thank you. Sorry, I didn't realize it wasn't on. They've had to close schools. So they have space available. We have the opposite problem.
So how much more above what we have here are we going to?
Phase 2 is-
Mr. Palmer, good question. Up on the screen there, as I mentioned earlier, we have a proposed one-time request to be submitted to the county council. You'll see when we get to page 11, but just to reference, that 2.8 million dollars is a request that has come in from planning and construction, Ms. Ashby, to acquire, and please, Ms. Ashby, correct me if I'm wrong, two 10-room modulars to be able to provide the necessary space to implement Phase 2. Is that correct, Ms. Ashby?
My question again is, how do you know what the necessary space is when you don't know a number? Or do we just?
We can, we're working off of, I'm laughing because Matt Aukie and I have had multiple conversations with, with Liesel in regards to projecting what those numbers would be. So Matt, not to speak for him, has a calculation where he looks at birth rate, and then so four years later, so he has a calculation of what projected four-year-olds would be here in Wycomico County. I kind of came at it from the other end. We're looking at school enrollment and the number of students who are traditionally in that setting. So for example, Northwestern Elementary has approximately, make sure my numbers are right, yeah. Northwestern Elementary has approximately like 50 kids per grade level. So we know that it's about two classrooms, and so we would anticipate that they would have about that same number at the pre-K as well. So I've kind of come at it as, what do we currently have in grades K through 5? And then Matt's come at it from the other end, looking at birth rate on up. And we have approximately, again, depending on where the bubble is, about 11, about 1,000 to 1,100 kids per grade level throughout the system.
And again, using the spreadsheet that Mr. Briggs and his task force developed, we've been able to develop the needs for each phase. Currently, just so you know, we have approximately 653 pre-K students being served, of which about 360 of them are in full-time pre-K slots today. Obviously, that's far from universal pre-K. And so that's why, in order to be able to afford this, the task force came forth with a recommendation to Dr. Hanlon that it be a phased-in approach.
So that means we have another 233 that are going through part-time pre-K?
That's correct. Half-days, just so you know, sir, at Pinehurst, Delmar, Fruitland Primary, Northwestern, Westside Primary, and Willarts are all half-day programs.
And part of that expansion, those 11 classrooms would be, some would be brand-new full-day programs, and others would just be taking those current half-days and offering a full-day opportunity. So we will be offering it to some, to more students, and then others just another opportunity, or an opportunity for full day as opposed to the half-day.
So 650-some in pre-K programs of some sort now, right?
Correct.
So what's the full universe look like? Do we have any idea? Or is that in there and I didn't read it? You're about to call me out on my reading.
No. Well, like Mr. Briggs said, between 1,000 and 1,100.
Okay.
And, and we've-
That's what I didn't get.
Right. And what we factored in, and again, Dr. Hanlon keeps reminding us, don't, don't anticipate 100% of that population going because some are going to go to private schools, some are going to homeschool, some just not going to want to take advantage of it for whatever reason. So we fact, we, we put in a multiplier to take into consideration that issue. So just so you understand, what we have projected for the phasing, Phase 1 would be an additional 220 students, and Phase 2 would be an additional 300 students. That's how we are building this.
So 300 would be spread over the two 10 units?
That's correct. That's correct. And again, Ms. Ashby, explain why you went to the 10, right.
Because as Mr. Briggs was discussing, in some schools, they're squeezing this space for Phase 1. So Phase 2 lets that burn again. So it's not, it's not just an additional 20.
It's freeing up some space.
It's freeing up some space.
Yeah, many of our schools are pushing the, the boundary of the capacity that they have. You know, so many students to eat in the cafeteria, so many students to serve as far as like gym space goes. So they're really stretching the limit, but they, they value pre-K that much. They want to make it work. But they are sacrificing some things such as teachers floating, teachers floating, having to use carts, being creative with lunch shifts and PE schedules and so forth.
Do we know the population of current age-wise pre-K? They're going to private school now in the community, roughly? I mean, I would think it'd be a pretty large number.
I can tell you from last year's prior care. Give me a second. I'll tell you while I'm trying to find the answer to your question, at least for this year's kindergarteners, what they were doing last year. The other thing that I'll mention, and it's really in its infancy, but I just want you to know that our, at least two of our delegation members are actively working to help us with this matter. I was in Annapolis on Friday and had a conversation with Carl Anderton, and also have received some emails from Chris Adams about some, the potential of introducing some legislation that would expand the current legislation that we talked about where if we implement, if we go, sooner we get it implemented, the more chance we might have to get this grant money from the state. They're looking at introducing some, in addition to that, that wouldn't necessarily go beyond FY20, but would look at a tier-two level of systems that are at least implementing, I think it was 51%, very, in its infancy. We will qualify for that. So there's, there's conversation, people looking out for us to try to help us out.
Yeah, that is, that is huge. Mr. Reed estimated that we would receive in 19 over a million dollars.
If, if that-
From the state, if that were to pass.
And it has to be for operations, that would be operational money, not capital money?
That is our, that is our understanding. That is our understanding.
We're talking about something that doesn't exist now.
Oh, absolutely. It's, it's in somebody's, you know, hopes.
Wishlist.
Yes.
But what exists now, you say you had those two, Chris and Carl, working on that. Are they looking for totally new legislation? Or are they looking to amend what they have to extend the time?
It's to amend the existing grant that was placed in officially last year, that those four current school systems are taking advantage of because they do offer universal pre-K. This would amend that legislation, previous legislation, to add what they're calling a tier-two program. Those, those four previous, or those who offer universal, as I'm reading it, would be tier-one schools. Anybody who offers at least 50% or more, but not universal, would be a tier-two, and they would qualify for a certain amount of income based upon the percentage of students to whom they are offering full-day kindergarten. And, Mr. Reed, I think it would, we would be about 58%? Is that correct, as I recall?
If you don't mind, I'd like to ask Ms. Ashby a question.
Oh, absolutely.
Quite a number of years ago, maybe 10 or more, we had a long-range building planning group that was meeting, that was pursuing, that was pursuing the question of trying to find private funds, possibly leasing for facilities. And I don't think anything actually came of that, but is that an option at all for, you know, leasing units with an option to buy in the future? Does that exist in the public education market today as a way to kickstart?
As far as the modular units are concerned? Yes, there's always a lease-to-own option. I think the general consensus was with senior leadership was once you start down this path, it's going to remain in, in place. So whether we spread that cost over time or commit to it upfront, usually it would be less expensive to commit to the upfront than leveraging the payment over a course of time as far as lease-to-own for a modular building.
I assume it would also require a commitment from the county for capital to buy also?
That's correct. Because typically, if you're going to place leveraged dollars in a budget, it's going to be in your operating budget. And that way, it would impact MOE. And that's where I think there would be the, the pushback. Whereas with the one-time option, we get to push it away from MOE. So that was the thought process.
Go back and answer, sorry.
There's currently, how many pre-K classrooms do we have that are full-day?
Full-day would be six, 12, 16, plus four, 20.
20 full-day. And they're basically in your Title I schools?
Yes, Beaver Run or Welk. Welk students are Beaver Run students. So Beaver Run, Chipman, Pemberton, and Prince Street. And then West Salisbury, when they open up in the fall, will have full-day pre-K as well.
So this 11 would make it somewhat universal?
It would make it closer.
Yeah, again, again, we would still, we estimate, we estimate, we'd be 300 short. 300 students short. Because Phase 2 will be from, yeah.
So that's Phase 2.
That's correct, Phase 2.
So to answer your question, Bill, about, I think you said private? Or, okay, so the kindergarten readiness assessment report tells you prior care. And it actually breaks it down in somewhat, it's somewhat confusing, but they break it down to childcare, if they were in childcare before, if they were in family childcare, if they were in Head Start, if they were in home or informal care, or non-public nursery. And I'm guessing that the private is the non-public nursery. And that's actually 1%. I'll give you the other categories. 10% in childcare, 2% in family childcare, 10% in Head Start, 15% home or informal care, and then the 1% in non-public nursery.
Why don't we just rent the Head Start space?
So you're trying to estimate these numbers factoring in? Because Head Start's not going to go away. And, and a lot of these other places are still going to want to operate their pre-K programs.
Correct. And Mr. Palmer's question is a valid one. Like, you, you have to be prepared if they choose to come. So you're, you're kind of having a guesstimate, but without the space, we know we can't get there.
You can't have it, right.
And I think some of your private schools, the parents would opt to go to the public schools full-day because it's, it would be free.
It's costly.
Yeah.
Okay, we did want to point out the specifics in case there were any questions about the line items 3, 4, and 5. Mr. Briggs' task force looked at each one of these line items because obviously they are significant. So just so you know, the MOI was based upon an additional $16,500 per classroom for MOI. The additional furniture was based upon $4,000, and the additional technology was $8,500 per classroom. So that's how we came up with those numbers.
We have room to, we'll provide transportation for pre-K. And we have room- And we have room now that won't be in, they'll basically run the same routes, the bus system would.
No, that's in the budget later.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, any questions on priority number one?
I don't have a question on that, but just maybe a question in general. On the ten percent of students that we have in the pre, in the project Head Start, if we could, if we implement universal healthcare, is that going to take Head Start away?
Universal pre-K?
Yeah, when we offered universal.
You said universal healthcare.
What?
You said universal healthcare.
No, no. That's the microphone. The ten percent number that we now have in Project Head Start, when we do offer universal pre-K, will that eliminate the need for Project Head Start? Or will it be a duplication of services or, someone jump in, help me out here.
It'll be parent choice then. I mean, I, that'll be up to them if they'd rather send them straight to us as a public school, or if they would want to take advantage of the Head Start program.
And how, do you know, Rick, how early Head Start, is that three-year-olds?
I do not know, so I don't even want to, I don't want to, and Susan's not here. Three.
Thank you. Thought so, so, you know.
What does ten percent equate into numbers?
If you go off the about a thousand kids per grade, so you're talking a hundred?
A hundred, that's still aging, two hundred. Okay. I'm thinking.
Okay. Next page represent our priority two initiative for Imagine 2022. Alternative pathways, graduation rate increases, signature programs, and E.S.O.L. budget requests. You have a page of requests, items one through twenty-three. That total nine hundred and seventy-seven thousand, one hundred and twenty-six dollars. I am not going to attempt to go through all these, but I would point out a couple of them and then ask the board, or turn it over to the board, to ask any questions of staff that they may have. I would point out the number, line item number four is the first step in the superintendent's request for, associated with the, excuse me, line six is the first step in the superintendent's request for implementing a fine arts dedicated program. And I'll let you speak to that if you'd like.
I have spoken to it before in my remarks to the state of the schools and yesterday at Greater Salisbury, but to me, the first, the next step to expanding our arts program is to offer curricular areas beyond vocal music and art. And so, through staff recommendations, we're looking at a musical theater, sorry, drew a blank. Musical theater teacher, as well as the teacher that you heard Mr. Ashby speak to, the digital communications, I think is, that's a different line, I'm assuming.
That's actually, we have a vacant C.T.E. position that was currently the plumbing program. And so, that's what we're going to, we're going to utilize that vacant C.T.E. position for that.
Just one teacher that we're looking for in that area.
And, and again, Dr. Hanlon, not to correct you, but it's interactive media, not, not digital communications. Interactive media. Yes, ma'am.
Interactive media. Thank you.
Bruce, it looks like from these requests, our E.S.O.L. population is growing.
It's continuing to grow, I think. Ruth, do you have a number, most recent? Not to put you on the spot.
We are at the doorway of the past.
Correct. I think it's an increase of over a hundred and fifty from last year. We, Ruth and I are currently working with Dr. Jude Lynn Mitchell and other supervisors to look at, are we trying to reach these kids the most effective way? We don't want to just throw money at the problem, so we're currently looking at how we, how are we utilizing existing staff? Are we using them the most effectively? Could we be trying to do something else? However, we do need the resources, and that could include additional E.S.O.L. teachers.
I would also point out that in addition to line six, line seven is the associated supplies and equipment to implement that new program. I would also point out a line eleven that, that Dr. Hanlon's also talked about, the establishing the Project Lead the Way program. That is associated supplies and equipment to implement that Project Lead the Way at Salisbury Middle next year.
Lines four and five, under Mr. Stoffer's recommendation, is just looking to continue to expand opportunities at Choices. Currently, our Choices students, it's hard for them to get those fine arts credits, which puts them closer to graduation. So, we're looking to be able to offer more opportunities there.
We're, in line four, we're actually looking at how an additional F.T.E. in the arts program can not only assist at Choices where they have no arts program, but also with the pre-K initiative.
That's correct, because that's.
An odd combination.
Yes, it is an odd combination, but as I talked about, the increase in some of the schools and the demand that it puts on the school, we, we have to offer those pre-K kids. It's not just the pre-K teacher and the instructional assistant. We also have to offer them special area opportunities. And so, because of that strain on existing staff, we would need that to alleviate some of that pressure.
One of the things that Mrs. Miles has submitted as part of her request, I wanted to make sure the board was aware of and understood, was line item number fourteen, two additional transportation routes for signature school academies, a hundred thousand dollars.
And these are, I'm sorry. These are through Mr. Hughes's calculations with regard to two bus routes specific to the academy, or the signature school that would be at Bennett Middle. And Mr. Briggs has been involved in.
Salisbury Middle.
Salisbury Middle, I'm sorry.
The academy would be it. The signature school is at Salisbury Middle.
My apologies. Yes, Salisbury Middle. I have Bennett Middle on the brain. But this would be utilizing the very specific transportation of these two routes to be able to gather the students at their locales and to return them in order to keep them on the same type of school schedule as the other traditional middle school schedule.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Hughes, but it is, is you, you have every intention to hopefully try to make these contract routes, but that will just depend.
That would be correct. I mean, right now, they're, I just used a bit, a minimum contract number because we don't know where the kids are coming from. And I would, you know, I, I've shared with Ms. Miles that historically, recently, minimum contracts have not been able to be awarded, so they could very well be a county-operated known route.
So, my question was about pre-K transportation. This is, this is about academy transportation. So, the pre-K you can handle internally at existing?
Well, again, not knowing where the kids are coming from, these routes could be utilized because it would be on the, it would be on an elementary tier is what we'll be looking for for pre-K. So, this signature school will be on the secondary schedule. So, the second tier could very well assist with pre-K transportation.
And Desmond, with some of the switch from half-day to full-day, would that actually alleviate some of the needed transportation for pre-K?
It will eliminate the, those six schools that currently have the half-day program.
Right.
But it would then increase our morning and afternoon.
Right.
Transportation for some buses. So, again, with that, not knowing where the kids are coming from, or if they will be coming at all, that would be something that we would have to monitor and evaluate probably the first two weeks of school and determine what modifications we need to make.
So, not fully understand the pro, this process. If the county were to go do, through and approve funding for, because we set the priorities. They say great for pre-K, but maybe not as great on priority two. We're, we're, we could figure out a way to handle the transportation for pre-K somehow. You're okay with that?
Somehow.
We, we would have to somehow.
I'm a little confused on something right here. We just listened to Mr., what was his name?
Fields.
Mr. Fields.
Fields, question about transportation, going into the area to pick up kids that go to Salisbury Middle. And we didn't know exactly how many that would be. Yet, and here we're going to pick up students to go to Salisbury Middle. We don't know where they're coming from, but we have a price for it. Yet, we don't have a price or know how many is going to be coming from that gentleman's area too. It's, I mean, it looks like, can we accomplish two things at one time here, or, do you see what I'm getting at?
I was a little busy on that. Well, he was talking about special permission transportation, right? Where we would pick students up to take them back to the school they're in.
Salisbury Middle.
Bennett Middle.
No, Bennett.
Bennett.
He's talking about special permission, so they could stay at Bennett Middle. That's the way I understood it. So, it would be an extra bus, because they wouldn't be going to Bennett Middle from there.
Totally new thing, but here we have a totally new thing here for something that we're not even sure about yet, where we do know something, you know, he knows for sure. That's why I'm just questioning something.
End of perception.
Yeah.
Well, no, you've lost me there, because we're, we're going to bus pre-K people to where they're supposed to go versus people get to go special permission where they want to go. That's a huge difference.
You're correct. Yeah, our policy currently supports pre-K transportation.
Right.
It does not support transportation for special permission.
Right, yeah. Right, right, right. Okay.
And we're only speaking for a year.
That was his contention.
Potentially two, because seventh graders.
Seventh graders too, though.
He said a year, but.
But we've changed that, right? So, the rising could be the same thing.
And if you do it there, you're going to have to do it at the other schools.
That was, that's the point, yeah. Did you want to say something, Mrs. Miles?
To everyone? And why are we doing the?
Right. Mrs. Miles?
With regard to special permission, by our own special permission procedure, we do not offer transportation. It is at the level of responsibility of a parent or guardian. Please remember the, the focus here is that those seventh and eighth graders are given the opportunity to apply for special permission to continue to attend Bennett Middle. It's not an automatic. They still have to go through the process of special permission, looking at attendance, behavior, and academics.
I just think it was, that's our perception.
Yeah, oh, certainly.
If they're not out in our community.
And I can't say that what I just shared, Dr. Hanlon shared, at both of the community meetings as well, so they were, they were able to.
Not everybody was there.
That's true. Very true.
That occurs.
Very true.
Desmond, I think at one time, we provided transportation if the parent could get them to an existing bus stop that would be going to that school. Is that still done?
If there's space available on the bus.
On the bus.
Okay. Any other questions on line items one through twenty-three and priority number two? Okay, hearing none. Let's move on to priority number three. Recruiting and retaining a highly qualified workforce. These items represent, at this point, items for meeting the salary and benefits of existing staff, totaling three point five million. At this moment in time, as noted on the presentation, we are anticipating a health insurance increase of six point five percent. Also, we have been notified from the Maryland State Retirement Agency to expect an increase in our state pension cost next year of twenty-nine thousand three hundred and fifty-eight dollars. And as Mr. Palmer likes to remind us, that's our increase in the normal cost projection for nineteen. And then, we have also been notified that we have to increase our administrative fee. And again, this is, this is one of those items that perturbs me, but, you know, I've been doing this a long time, so I, 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 I'm never surprised when I see something out of the state. But we are, we, meaning LEAs around the state, are paying for a hundred percent of the administrative costs to run the Maryland State Retirement System. And next year, our increase for our share for doing that is up fifty thousand five hundred and forty-one dollars. Ms. Rosatano, off the top of your head, do you remember what the total annual cost is now for Wycom County for that line item?
For the administrative fee?
For the administrative fee. So, it'll be now three hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars.
That's just a giveaway, Tony. That's a cry.
That's to run the minute, the administration of the Maryland State Retirement System.
If they're not going to put anything into it, tell them to just back off and we'll handle it, and we'll save the three hundred thousand dollars.
Can do a better job of it.
Oh, undoubtedly.
All right. Any questions on priority number three?
So far, we haven't heard about contributing to any unfunded liabilities. Zach Quinoff has added. I know in the past, we've done some of that.
Yes. There will be a proposal at an upcoming work session that will talk about contributing an amount to the O.P.A.B. Plan, Other Post-Employment Benefits Plan, health, health insurance for retirees that is outside of the operating fund. So, you will be hearing that at a separate presentation.
The fun never ends. It's like breakfast with Bruce every week, so, right? I call it breakfast with Bruce. Budget time.
Oh, boy. Oh, boy. All right. No other questions on priority number three. We move on to the other remaining requests that at this point, the superintendent and his staff have submitted as part of consideration for the board. They consist of line items one through eighty-eight. The next three pages in the handout, lines one through thirty-eight, I mean eighty-eight. They total three million, three hundred and eighty-two thousand, four hundred and fourteen dollars. Again, I would like to point out that for several of those line items, you'll notice a, a column labeled cost reductions. This is where the particular budget manager or department head is utilizing existing funds within their budget allotments to cover a part or all of the costs associated with that new request. So, again, as the superintendent has stated, on more than one occasion, the department heads and the budget managers do take a look at what money they have, and they reallocate it or realign it for potential new requests in this budget. So, when, when she's asked, or, or a board member, or staff, or. So, when, when she's asked, or, or, or a board member or staff are asked, well, what do you do with all the other money you've got? Well, this is a primary example of how we utilize existing money to help fund new requests, so that we're not asking for new money for any of those line items, if that, if that makes sense. So, uh, you have, like I said, items one through eighty-eight. Um, we'll definitely entertain any questions that you may have. Mr. Briggs?
If you want to look at lines twenty-three, thirty, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, um, you'll notice those were left in there, not knowing the results of today's meeting. Um, our hope is that those boundary lines adjustments will, um, eliminate the need for those positions at this point, so appreciative of that.
So, what I'm hearing you saying, Mr. Briggs, is those line items can come off, is that correct?
That's what I'm saying.
That is a move in the right direction. Remember, our goal was to make that zero, that budget gap, so here's our first step. Ms. Rosatano, would you please note that? Line items twenty-three, thirty, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five. Uh, and I want to make sure, seventy-four and seventy-eight, Mr. Briggs, is that correct?
That is correct.
Seventy-four and seventy-eight?
Uh, hold on.
No, no?
Keep those.
All right, those special ed, seventy-four and seventy-eight should stay, okay, very good. All right, so a recap again. We're gonna eliminate, at this point in the budget process, lines twenty-three, gone. Line thirty, gone. Line thirty-three, gone. Line thirty-four, gone. Line thirty-five, gone.
And not to hammer the point too much, but again, we were talking about transportation and special permission. By continuing, if we were to allow that, we would be defeating the whole purpose of the boundary line adjustments and then would still have the continued enrollment bubble expansion hitting Bennett Middle, which would then not allow us to do what we just did, which was cross those positions off. So, I can't, I just feel like I need to say that again, like, we can't really flex on that.
Okay, one line item I do want to point out, um, and again, I would encourage, if any staff member wants to point out anything, please do so, uh, to, to maybe answer a question that may come up. Uh, line item nine is a new line item. Um, you'll recall, last year, for the first time, we, uh, started paying the state of Delaware, again, as part of the Delaware Tuition Exchange, uh, Agreement that we have with Delaware. Uh, in nineteen, um, uh, Mr. Reed is projecting, uh, the amount that we may owe, um, the state of Delaware to be seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
Do we know what it was in past years?
Uh, this year, we are projecting three hundred or four hundred thousand.
So, it's more, almost double?
Yes, the, the, yep.
Okay.
And that's just because of the number of students that we send there. And again, it's now up to six hundred students, I believe, in, of air high school students, middle high going to, and fifth grade, fifth through twelfth grade going there versus they're only sending us, uh, pre-K through, uh, fourth grade.
Is their cost high? Is their cost, isn't their cost to us higher than our?
No, actual, our costs are higher than theirs, but just because of the total number, sheer number of students is what's.
Well, per student, it's.
That's right. It, there's a, we're, theirs is lower than air per student cost. Yes.
What is there?
Yeah, air, airs is higher. And I, I can, um, if you have that spreadsheet, you can pull up and we'll, we'll get that number to you.
Bruce, did that, uh, did that occur because we moved, we lost fifth grade?
We sent fifth grade, that's correct.
And if you think about that, five through twelve, that's eight years of school.
Yeah.
Versus K or pre-K through four, which is five or six, depending whether it's which measure. There's a variance there.
Yeah.
Do they send a lot of pre-K over to us? Just out of curiosity, not many.
Um, since Delmore's a half-day program, they can't send too many to us. So, I think it's about the same as average, which is about fifty-two of this, percent of the students come from Delaware and we have about forty-eight percent. I think it's about pretty much that same amount rates through pre-K through, uh, uh, fourth grade.
They just, they just have two half-day programs.
Is that seven seventy-five net of what they send us for ours?
It's net, that's correct, that's right.
Got it.
That's a net figure.
So, the Delaware, uh, cost per pupil is ninety-nine, twenty-five. Two thousand seventeen, ours was about twelve thousand, four seventeen.
Um, I would point out, uh, line forty-nine and fifty. Um, we have been notified by MSDE, um, that the two administrative positions that are currently funded by the Judy Center Grant, which is a state grant, will no longer fund those two administrative positions. Another one of those situations where the state gave you the money and now they're saying, oh, sorry, um, can't, uh, use it for, um, those administrative positions. Uh, so, um, obviously, those administrative positions are very important to, uh, the operation of that facility, uh, as it currently exists. So, um, we're having to pick those up in our, in our budget. Now, I do know Mr. Briggs is working on, on a, on a plan. I don't know if you want to talk about that at this moment.
Sure. Uh, one of the things that we're looking to do, our Wycomico Early Learning Center, um, WELC, which houses one three-year-old classroom and then I think it's nine or ten pre-, uh, four-year-old pre-K classrooms, is actually a part of Beaver Run Elementary School. Those schools feed directly into Beaver Run for the most part, like ninety-five percent of them. Um, currently, we have a sitting principal, um, running the Wycomico Early Learning Center. Um, Ms. Melva Wright is the former principal at West Salisbury. And so, um, the current plan is for her to transition back to West Salisbury with its opening. Um, and, um, we could then work with utilizing, um, either a dean of students or an assistant principal under Mr. Kurt Twilley's leadership at Beaver Run, um, to oversee that building as well. So, we could add a position, um, but one less principal, um, to, uh, basically Kurt, Mr. Twilley believes that it will really unite that school community, um, where they're kind of serving, serving as two separate entities right now. Um, it will work for vertical articulation from pre-K to K, um, and it will also bring the families, um, more united as well, so. Currently working on the logistics of that, um, that happening.
Okay, at this moment, I don't hear any other questions. Again, we'll be meeting again next, uh, Tuesday morning at seven-thirty, uh, to continue the discussion. The goal, obviously, to be, we're gonna get this to zero, uh, the revenue versus expenditures. So, um, it, the goal today is to introduce these to you, then give you a chance to review over the next week and then come back with specific questions of staff as to their reason or rationale as to, quote, why we need this particular item. Okay, um, next item to be reviewed today is the one-time items that we talked about a few minutes ago. And the first item, as we mentioned, is the two-ten classroom modular building to implement phase two of pre-K, uh, the pre-K initiative. Again, ten, two point eight million. And again, as, and as Ms. Ashby articulated to us, uh, if she doesn't, uh, start now on acquiring and determining location for that, it will not be ready for September twenty-nineteen implementation of phase two. So, that's why you're seeing that now as a request in our nineteen, uh, budget for, uh, one time. All right, and then I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Briggs to talk about the other technology requests.
And Mr. Lang, feel free to chime in as I go through this. First of all, let me talk about one that's not on there. Um, one that we were currently working on and just got it to, um, Mrs. Rosatano today is you'll see in, uh, number two, the projectors to be used for whiteboards and interactive technology at Salisbury Middle School. Um, Dr. Hanlon made it clear and we agree ho- wholeheartedly that if we are moving some students from Bennett Middle to Salisbury Middle and Y Middle, we want to make sure that the technology, um, that these students are going into is, is equal or if not better. Um, so, that ninety thousand in line two is, um, for Salisbury Middle and then the, we just got the final number today for Y Middle. It'll be an additional approximately ninety-five thousand for the upgrade in techno- classroom technology at Wycomico Middle School as well. Number three is the parkside projector renovation. As the SGA rep, um, said today, um, very excited with the technology there and the, and the changes to the facility, um, but we want to also make sure that they have the appropriate technology, um, in each of their new classrooms. And then, Bob, do you want to speak to number one? I think it's just, uh, unanimous across the board, the need.
Yes, uh, we, every year, we look at the laptop requests that come in from the school principals. We also weigh that against scorecards that we have and the ratios of devices to students. Uh, this year, we looked at that again and the schools that did request additional laptop carts are indeed below the line in terms of ratios, total saturation of devices per student. For those new board members, uh, we are not a one-to-one county. We are approximately one device for every two students in most cases. And we float above and below that number, depending on the location. We haven't increased our fleet of computers until the last year and this year in that every year, we have computers that age out and they have to be refreshed. The only time we get new computers is if the price drops and we can buy more for the money or we get a grant. We have no philanthropic feed of devices to our program. Uh, so essentially, we're a flat-funded for devices. Last year, we received one-time funding from the county and we hope to do the same this year to incrementally increase our fleet. Some of you may have asked about or heard about us doing a one-to-one program like Worcester. If we opt to go that route, giving every ninth grader a laptop, it's about a million dollars a year sustained expense. Each year, we'd give a thousand ninth graders a laptop, every year sustained as every new ninth grade comes in and they would have that device for four years. So, lots of options, but we do explore saturation rate of devices currently and we found that we have a deficit this year in several schools and they're reflected in these numbers.
This seems like it would be one of those opportunities for the community businesses with connections to these areas and these types of equipment to, uh, step in and, uh, show some support. That I could put down on my list.
And we'd be happy to put their business logo on the side of a laptop cart if that would help.
Sounds great to me.
This laptop cart sponsored by company XYZ.
Good idea.
So, so Bob, obviously, I could do the math, but to save me, a laptop cart, you're projected how much per cart?
It depends on the type that we use. Our typical configuration now is a twenty laptop cart and that runs around twelve thousand dollars.
Okay. All right, so, uh, but obviously, there's more than twelve thousand here for thirty laptop carts, so.
Yeah, we, we would work with each principal. Uh, I think we have a couple of configurations in.
That exceed twelve-five, obviously.
That's correct.
Okay, I, I got it.
La- last year, we tried a thirty laptop cart as a test run. Eighteen-five, thank you. Um, last year, we tried a thirty configuration cart and assigned those to a classroom under the, the cohort program. And we're still looking at the, the success of that, evaluating it. So far, the results seem positive.
Thank you. Okay, any questions on any of the one-time items at this point, anyway? Okay, finally, uh, as, uh, we do, uh, and we'll continue to do, uh, the board has always asked to see what else had come in in terms of requests, uh, that, uh, was submitted by either a school, a particular budget manager, or, um, a, a department head. And you have listed, um, uh, three separate pages of requests that currently have not been considered for funding. Um, those total requests to date, uh, three pages of them, lines item one through sixty-eight, they total six million, five hundred and sixty thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars. Um, these are all requests that, uh, were submitted to the superintendent and staff and at this point have not been recommended to be bring, brought forward. But the, the board has always asked us to summarize what they are. We stand for any questions?
Bruce, are any of that group or any, are they prioritized or just listed?
No, they are just listed in category order, not in any priority order.
With the, um, being a fairly new member, um, from a budget standpoint, how does, especially on the revenue side, how do, how does this, how do we match our strategic vision to future budgets? I know this is a one-time, you know, we have to make things balance, that's our, what we have to do. But in thinking down the road and as we have future conversations with the county council, you know, I'd like to see us look out to where we, our funding should be from the county and projecting that, how are the superintendent's visions gonna fit into, you know, having that funding, uh, improve our schools and match that vision? So, is there a strategic budgeting process that's a multi-year thing that's going on?
Yes, as part of the consolidated budget that this board will have to approve on March the twelfth, will be three additional years of outlook. the 12th, will be three additional years of outlook into operating for '20, '21, and '22. Ms. Savco, excuse me, Ms. Rosatano, excuse me, Donna, Ms. Rosatano has already started working on that. So, there'll be three years for you to review.
Do you do that every year?
We do that every year.
But this year, they are tied specifically.
This year, right, we have a lot more in terms of vision than we've had in past years to be able to help us, and Mr. Briggs already has started looking at what each one of those strategic priorities specifically will look like in those out years.
Will we get a chance to look at that prior to the final, or any, just a rough draft?
Yes, we will. We're going to, that's our goal.
I have a question about '67 and '68 up there. When I see a need for a teacher, it seems to me that you either need that teacher or you don't need that teacher. If this is up here, is that telling me there's an unfilled teacher slot somewhere that we're not filling, and we're just hoping that we're getting a nice-to-have teacher in there? Or do we need to readjust our manpower, manning for these areas where they would like to have these extra teachers, or...
Yeah, Mr. Palmer, most of the requests that you see, like, if you want to, let's talk about '67 for a minute. So, that was a request from Wy-Hi based upon what they saw as their needs. So, something like that would then go to Mrs. Walston and Mrs. Miles overseeing special ed, and they can then determine, looking at the whole system, does Wy-Hi have everything that they need, or is a need, an adjustment needed based upon the needs of the entire system? So, all the principals and look at their own schools and advocate for their needs, but then it comes to the district level to look at the needs of the entire system, and they can make adjustments as they deem appropriate at that point, if I said that right, Mr. Walston.
That was my question, too. I wondered, when a request comes from a building principal, does it go, things work a little differently, I'm learning now in Delaware about things, so it goes to, say, the elementary supervisor, secondary, special ed on request? And is there such a thing as need list and dream list? That's kind of, we had that, that's what it was, you know? And I understand what he's saying about, you know, I guess, staffing and making sure that all of our children's needs are met. I think that's important. And that's, you know, you answered it, but I, I don't know, need list and dream list.
Well, I think Dr. Hanlon answered it best for me one day. We were having a conversation, and she's indicated to me the fact that all of these requests have been articulated as needs in those schools, so they're not any dreams.
Yeah, I don't think they're dreams.
They are needs within those schools, and as we all know, because we've done this for many years now, it's all about prioritizing. It's just never, never enough dollars to do it, and so I'm thankful for the great staff that we have, who, they are vetting this stuff constantly before it gets to air level, and then, and then we, in turn, vet it again before it gets to the superintendent level, and then she vets it again before it even comes to your level. So, there's been, there's been a weeding out process and a prioritization done. So, you are seeing at this moment what we believe to be no dreams, these are, these are needs, and then now it's going to be a part, a matter of prioritizing those needs.
And that's why I asked the question after Mr. Palmer did. I mean, if there is a need for an instructor for our children, something's important.
I, where I work at, as we get new buildings that come online, say you get 166,000 square foot building, I need more personnel to man that building. It's not nice to have. It's either, it's going into my manpower management, and either they are going to find a way of getting it for me, or their new buildings are not going to be maintained the way that they should. It seems to me that the need for a teacher in some of these areas should be permanent, and I would approve it, and somebody else would have to say, "No, we're not going to give you the money for it." But I myself would not say, "No, I'm not going to give you the money for it."
We will review with that in mind, knowing that, you know, we have to be, I agree with you, Mr. Palmer, all they can do is say no, but I do believe...
They would have to say it, then.
Right, we've talked about, is there a point, there's a fine line between making a reasonable request, maybe even beyond reasonable, and, I forget, there are your words to, I can't think of the words you used, I'm sorry, it's late in the day, but, you know, what's totally unreasonable that makes it look like ridiculous that they're not even considering, kind of thing.
And that's kind of why I wanted that list from, from Mr. Ford, because I want to go back and review that list to see if any of these, these needs, like in '67, '68, were on there last year, and are we just passing a buck again this year? That's why I wanted to check that. And somebody did put, Nicky, I guess you just, thank you.
Yeah, now, Mr. Palmer, what you asked for, and maybe I got it wrong, you, I thought you asked for the one-time request last year.
I thought you did, too.
There might have been two things in that email.
Okay, then we will also send you those requests that were unfunded last year. Ms. Rosatano, if you'll note that, please. We'll get that to you as well, because those protect, those would be these type of items that were not one-time items, but they would be ongoing requests that were unfunded last year. We have that list as well, and we'll send that to you as well, sir, and to the entire board.
Maybe I had the wrong terminology.
No, that's okay. We will, we'll send you both.
The hardest part of this is, it reminds, what's that?
Prioritization is the hardest part.
Well, yeah, it reminds me of like, it's like an ER, it's a triage. Everybody comes in the ER and needs medical attention, right? But some people need it more urgently than others. But there'll come a time in that ER when it's full of all urgent care, and who are you going to pass on? You can't. And so, that's what we're having to do, is to Mr. Palmer's point, we're, if we're getting the same request that are needs, now they're urgent needs, and now there's so much urgency, we don't have enough funding, so, that's where you're going. We got to ask for what we absolutely need, and if this is the number, then let's ask for it.
Well, let me...
I'm in the chairman's seat today, baby, let's ask for it. The worst is no, but if we need it, we need it.
If I, if I may, because one of my other hats that I wear is to review legislation that is, that has been put forth in the legislature, and Dr. Hanlon forwarded to us, to me yesterday, and to the staff, House Bill 1595. And House Bill 1595 is called the Adequacy Target Grant. Some of you who've been around as long as I have will remember the term adequacy, because that was something that Thornton talked about much in terms of providing a adequate per-pupil amount of funding for education. And over the years, that term has been dropped, but lo and behold, now, we find it surfacing in a particular piece of legislation, whose sponsor happened to be just about every one of our local delegates, and delegates from Caroline County and delegates from PG County. Because what that bill does do, it identifies those three counties as being those counties who were not funded at least at 80% of the per-pupil adequacy amount in the year 2015. So, those three counties, Wycomico, correct me if I'm wrong, Jesse, Wycomico, Caroline, and PG, one of those three, did not receive between state and local funding at least 80% of what the Department of Legislative Service has determined to be an adequate per-pupil amount of funding for education. This particular legislation identifies those three school districts specifically and calls out that if a local county, those three counties, fund at least 2% above the required MOE for that county government, then they would be entitled to an adequacy modifier that, for Wycomico County, could exceed 18 million new dollars in state aid. That's how much we are beyond, beyond or behind in terms of, at least as a FY 2015. So, what are the chances of us getting something like that, specifically since it's just three counties that are named? I don't know, but at least what it's going to do is going to bring to the attention of folks at the State House that Wycomico, in terms of funding at an adequate level, is below where other counties.
Well, where you have Prince, what was that?
PG.
PG, when you have PG County, you're talking about the second highest number of delegates in the, in the legislature, legislative session, and with us in there and Cecil in there, you're talking about a considerable number of delegates.
Yes, you are.
And I believe that Delegate Anderton has done a nice job of aligning himself with that group of delegates.
So, to address both of your concerns and Mr. Palmer's, we can hope that, that the revenue side is going to go up. The board will have to, based upon a recommendation that comes from the superintendent, determine how much more than MOE they're going to ask for. And internally, we will tweak estimates on things like earnings on investments and year-end funds, but they're minor. So, the only hope we have is additional state aid that may come forth, and maybe another disparity grant, or perhaps, you know, some kind of legislation that doesn't currently exist that would provide funding for adequate education, or even maybe as the superintendent keeps believing is going to happen, the Kerwin Commission keeps pushing pre-K funding, maybe something will come through for pre-K funding for next year. But you've got that potential source, and then the only other source is asking the county for either MOE or some amount north of MOE, and that's going to be the tough decision, or the decision to be made.
I know the superintendent and all of you have done a good job of, this year in particular, I think, of spreading the word of our inadequacy of funding, and everybody that sees that, I think, acknowledges it's not where it needs to be. But during the annual beg-a-thon in front of the county council, are we doing any strategic work on getting a coalition of some significant players to help us sing our, express the need and how, I mean, I would call it embarrassing that county funding is. I know you can't call it that, but, or what we call it.
Yeah, pretty much did.
In that way.
I know you have to be careful of the words you use, but I mean, you have...
And we have, last year, we had parents who, and some school personnel who came out and spoke to specific items in the budget, but the point about just speaking generally about the level of funding is good.
Are there any corporate partners that we could approach now to get their CEOs to speak on our behalf? And if any of us here have connections there to, I think, having that kind of impact, if we could convince them of helping us and having that same presentation, it might...
Greater Salisbury Committee, Chamber Commerce.
At least brings a little more additional gravitas to our request.
Yeah, I think both, as Mr. Palmer's saying, both the Chamber and the Greater Salisbury Committee would be, and members of those organizations.
Perhaps a work session, real quick work session with them could provide some results.
What about some representatives of, you know, we don't have to talk about it now, but it is a work session, you know, the Henson Foundation, the president and CEO of Purdue, who's obviously very much a public school guy, his kids went to public schools, other local, maybe, you know, the new CEO of the hospital, if we could convince him to at least write letters of support of how critical our needs are.
I think that's a great idea, because again, without beating my dead horse about my board reports, that's the key to this area. If education isn't perceived as being funded and doing well and growing, and we're not putting money in it, the area won't grow. It's economic. I mean, so, like, like you're saying, executives need to step up and say, "Hey, we got to do this." I mean, we got to figure this, everyone, everyone has a stake in it, to figure this out, but I'm preaching to the choir here, of course.
Right, and the good news is that at least what we heard yesterday at the Greater Salisbury Committee was that not only do we have the support of the Chamber, but it was stated by the chairman of the Greater Salisbury Committee that we had the support of the Greater Salisbury Committee as well. So, I think, I think Mr. Turner makes a great point. I think if we can identify those key spokespeople, either CEOs, CFOs of organizations, to come out to share or write, I think it's a great idea.
It is a great idea.
Because I think they're committed. I mean, they, they know how important education of their employees and their employees' children are to their organizations, and their continued presence in Salisbury as a community and Wycomico County. They know how critical that is.
That's part of their recruitment.
Yes.
I think they're committed, and they're just really sitting back waiting to find something to do like this that would show that immediate support. This is one of them.
Yeah.
Yep. I agree.
And if there's anything that I can do to assist in that, I'm happy to do, make phone calls or whatever. I think as a group...
Me as well.
Yeah.
Excellent.
Well, did I just preside over the longest board meeting ever?
This is the work session, this is the work session now.
Just a work session now.
It's a work session.
Hey, Gene, just one quick thing. Dr. Hanlon, could you shoot us all a copy of 1585?
The bill that...
1595, yes, we'll, we'll make sure those links are sent to you.
Has that been introduced, or is it just...
It was Friday, isn't she correct?
It was.
I believe so, I believe so, yes.
Because I haven't seen that yet, $3 dollar.
Yeah, actually, we, we've already received a request for a fiscal note on that bill, so...
Okay.
Okay, as, just real quick to point out the, the calendar and what's next, next Tuesday morning at 7:30, right here in this building, 101 Long Avenue, we commence, or we continue our discussion, again, what the superintendent will be looking for at next Tuesday's meeting is a, no, I'm having second thoughts here. I can't remember whether, I apologize, either the 20th or 22nd, we're going to have a presentation on health care and to address the question that Mr. Turner raised as the first part of the meeting, and I apologize, I'm drawing a blank. Jesse, do you remember whether it's the 20th or the 27th? As we do each year for the board, because health care is such a large component of the entire budget, we have a separate presentation done by Mr. Vincent and Mrs. Vincent from the cost data share side and from the benefit side, Ms. Vincent's side, to give the board a recap of where we are with health care. to give the board a recap of where we are with health care. And then also to talk about the OPEB, because Mr. Turner has specifically asked about that. Remember, we've had a presentation as to where OPEB is and what the new GASP requirement's going to be relative to disclosing that liability on the financial statements effective June 30th, 2018. So, I'm not sure, I can't remember. So it either will be the 20th or 27th. That will be approximately about a half hour, 45-minute presentation, after which it'll be turned over to the board to ask any specific questions about any of the line items that are on the agenda. Sorry.
Bruce, will you have any more information from the state relative to funding by February 20th? I know you won't have anything from county.
No, no, we will have no information now until after the session is complete. Yes, signee die.
Yeah, wasn't Friday their last day for introducing?
I believe so, sir.
Yeah.
I believe so. They're, they're well up over 1,500 now.
Well, that's less than what they normally do.
Typically, it's, it's election year, so people are a little bit afraid about submitting.
Does that conclude our work session? Is dinner coming in next, or? No? Thank you all.